If everyone would pick up their agenda, we'll start tonight's meeting. And there is a change in the agenda. And Dr. Lutze, would you just explain to us so we'll understand the change?
I would be happy to. Good evening. We have a slight change to the agenda in that we are adding an action item. And you'll see there's a red star next to action item. Because we are looking for a motion, when we get to that part, we'll be looking for a motion to transfer $100,000 out of a couple of line items that Nancy will talk about a little bit in the statement of accounts into the project work line so that we can use that money towards the Saks remediation project. So I'd like to put that on as a proposed action item.
All right. So we have a proposed action, a change in the agenda. And is there someone who would like to move that? Thank you, Penny. And is there a second on that? Thank you, Allison. All those in favor of that, please signify by raising your hands. All that are present, say yes. We'll then move on to the next item, which is approve the minutes from May 5, 2015.
Oh, we have to call, have to call the meeting to order?
Oh, I did. It was very soft. I said, "We're calling the meeting to order now." Yes, I did. I started that way. You probably, I was soft. I was soft in my voice. Now, I said, "We're going to call the meeting to order," and then we're going to start with the change. That was...
I voted for it.
We're going to approve the, the May 5 minutes then. And is there a motion to approve the minutes? Or does anyone want to look through that? Okay. Motion to approve. And is there a second? Jean? All those in favor? So it's all that are present? Now, comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening? Other than our program? There being no one to speak, we'll then move on to reports and recognition. And ever ready? Ms. Piakas standing ready. And is there an introduction that, Dr. Corenti, would you like to make?
I think it's going to be...
They'll start right up?
I will be doing that.
...who's going to be doing the introduction this evening.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, anyway, Dr. Corenti. You do such great introductions.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I can't tell you how excited I am to introduce you to the people who make assistive technology come alive for our students. Tonight, you'll have the opportunity to understand the details of assistive technology use with them and to see its impact. I'd like to take this moment to thank the board for its continued support for our students with special needs and for the technology you'll see in a few moments. It truly has the capacity to change lives. I'll be honest in telling you that a few months ago, we were having an assistive technology meeting. And upon seeing a video clip that some of these people were showing me of one of our students, I was so struck by the video that I asked Dr. Lutze to come in and join us. He happened to be in his office. And he was kind enough to oblige me. And I dragged him into the conference room. And I guess I can't speak for him, but I would say that I think he was equally as moved by what we saw. So we decided to share some of this story with you this evening. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce you to some very important people here who play a major role in the use of this technology with their students. With us this evening is our assistive technology specialist, Ashley Tremblay. She's standing behind me. She does that a lot, usually on the side of me. But she is, Ashley is a special education teacher extraordinaire and was for a very long time. She has a master's in assistive technology and a minor in instructional technology. And Ashley knows technology. She really does. She can come up with solutions to problems for anyone who calls her, and they do, all the time. Right? She is also a wonderful trainer of staff and a wonderful trainer of parents. She works with families to help them to understand the technology that their child is using and to be able to use it in the home and in a variety of other settings. That helped them to be more independent and more capable. Peggy McNamara is also here with us. And Peggy is the assistive technology technician in our schools. And Peggy helps to ensure that everything's working well. She runs from building to building. Both of these ladies run from building to building all day, every day. And Ashley also spends some time occasionally with our students who are placed out of the district in some very faraway places who need help in this capacity. And they both do a wonderful job in their work. Also with us tonight, I always want to take the opportunity, because it's kind of rare, to introduce our special education administrators who are here with us this evening. And that would be Carol Pacala and Mary Ann DeFelice. And of course, Dr. Miller, who has been a wonderful support for us through the years in terms of attending our assistive technology meetings, which are monthly. We have a very deep and broad agenda always. A lot of it is based on what the needs are. And you've been very kind in helping us to achieve the needs technology-wise. Joining us tonight as well are some staff who use this technology enthusiastically with their students. And I do mean enthusiastically. I just said to the three of them that I would very much like to spend more time with them because they are some of the happiest, most passionate people I know. They really are. They have wonderful senses of humor, and they love their work, and they love their kids. And I think as a result of that, their children, whoever works with them thrives. And that's true for all of our staff. But they're particularly peppy. So that's another reason that they're here tonight. They're particularly, aren't you? You're peppy. So, from Saks Middle School is Kevin Wilkins. Kevin is a special education teacher. And from East and South is Stephanie Bellino. And Stephanie is one of our occupational therapists. And from the preschool program, our speech and language pathologist, Allison Schroeder. And just so that you're aware, we did email this presentation to you, and we will, for the public, be posting it to the website tomorrow morning. I'm very excited about what you're about to see. And included in some of the information that Ashley will be providing for you are some wonderful little video clips that will show you how the children are using their technology. So enjoy. This screen is not particularly clear, so if you're having difficulty seeing and you need to move, you are welcome to because we don't want you to miss anything.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I love what I do. And a lot of people say, "What do you do?" And I say, "Assistive technology." And they just nod their head and say, "That's nice," and move on. They don't really want to ask. So I am always happy to share what it is. So, an assistive technology device. This is actually a law that went into effect in 2004. It is any item, piece of equipment, or product system, whether acquired commercially off the shelf, modified, or customized, that's used to increase, maintain, or improve the functional capabilities of children with disabilities. This is actually a definition that I love. And I love it because it's not limiting. And you will see tonight things that are acquired off the shelves. And I love going through magazines and finding different things, going to the hardware store, going to Costco, and just seeing, you know, what's out there that can help. Duct tape is used a lot. Velcro is used a lot. There is no limit. So I just, I love this. What's a service? So this is what I do. It's any service that directly assists a child with a disability in the selection, acquisition, and use of the assistive technology device. And that includes the evaluation, the purchasing, the selecting, designing, fitting, customizing, adapting, applying, retaining, repairing, or replacing devices, coordinating, and use of other therapies, interventions, or services. And I really work so closely with all the related service folks in the district. And then the training aspect of the child, the child's family, and then other professionals. So it is all encompassing. And then I always say assistive technology is all encompassing. It's an umbrella of services. And here are the areas. Seating, positioning, and mobility. Communication, which includes AAC. So sometimes I'm referred to as the AAC specialist. Sometimes I'm referred to as the AT specialist. The actual definition is computer access. And I add a device access because we've really moved to accessing a variety of devices. The motor aspects of writing, composition of written material, reading, math, organization, executive functioning, recreation and leisure, vision, hearing, and general. Right? They just kind of put it all in there with, especially with general. It's like, well, let's just, you know, throw anything in there. When should it be considered? The law says any age 3 to 21. So birth to 3 have their own program, but for school-aged children, it's any age 3 to 21. And by law, at least annually. And that was really important, that teams really consider it because it was left out quite a lot. And then anytime the team feels there is a need for a referral. What should be considered for an AT referral? Is the student having difficulty accessing a task independently and/or functionally? And I ask that of teams. What is the student having difficulty with when they're in the classroom? Not when they're receiving the direct special ed service, but when they're in the classroom. What are they having difficulty with? And then, has there been a significant change in curriculum setting or another factor that's impacting the student's access to the curriculum? Unfortunately, we have a lot of students that get concussions. And they get temporary 504s. And a lot of them come to me to say, you know, "Can you help? Because there's been a significant change." A lot of times, there is a change when we jump grade levels and school levels, fourth to fifth, and then eighth to ninth, pre-K to K, you know, big jumps like that. Where is it used? It's really used everywhere, the classroom, lunchroom, library, town, home, and anywhere it's needed. There is no limit. We don't ever say, "You can't have that when you leave." I mean, it's like saying to me, "You can't have your glasses to do this presentation because it's after-school hours." It's not fair. So it's anywhere it's needed. And why is it important? It's important because it helps a student be successful when otherwise a task may feel impossible. And I hear that a lot, especially, you know, from these guys who say, you know, "It's just made such a difference. It's just made such a difference." And I really feel all the time, almost every day, that parental feeling of when your child just learned to walk and how excited you were. Or they said their first words, or they ate with utensil, they rode a bike. So that feeling of seeing your child for the first time do something, I would say we get to experience that a lot, and I probably get to experience it even more just because I'm all over. And that's really just the incredible feeling that we allowed them to do something that was otherwise impossible. It also decreases the stress in students and teachers and parents. And that's, that's pretty important because then they're able to access the learning. And it allows students to be more independent. Ultimately, that's always the goal, is what can we do to help the students be more independent? You know, in thinking about what we ask kids to do every day in school, we ask them to watch, listen, talk, sit, sit still, color, write, spell, write a paper, answer a question, read a novel, read an article, read a textbook, organize, study, remember, and so much more. Right? Every, all the time, kids are being asked to do something. But for some students, those tasks may feel impossible. This says, "For fair selection, everybody has to take the same exam. Please climb that tree." And, you know, I found this cartoon years, years ago. And in working with students with learning disabilities, it was really important to explain what it's like for these kids when they're in the classroom, having to read and write when it's such a struggle. And I just felt like this, this always says what he needed to say. So how can assistive technology help? I'm just going to go through all the areas now, and, you know, please feel free to chime in. So for seating, positioning, and mobility, this guy, he just, he brings me such joy. His head is down quite a lot. And so on the desk is the seesucker stand. And we actually extended it, and he can keep his head up. And there's Velcro that's attached to it. And, you know, he's lifting his arms. And so the PT and OT, when they come, they just love, you know, I love seeing him in that position. And then a specialized bike that he can use. For communication, so this little peanut just got her device a couple weeks ago.
I want reasons.
I want reasons. Good job.
Do I get that?
I want juice.
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 So I kept that, that piece in there because she's starting to label, and that's huge. She, you know, she really got the idea that this is helping her to communicate and...
Snack, just to jump in quickly. Snack was a very frustrating time of day for her, and now she's finding joy. And she's rewarded by being able to communicate. So huge improvements with this little girl. The length of her utterance has expanded, her spontaneous labeling, even when the device isn't there. It's amazing how much improvement she's made in such a short amount of time with the only changes been introducing technology.
This is just an example in a lunchroom.
Yes.
Ms. Smith's room.
Okay, let's clean up. Oh, so tell me. Yes, you're ready? Okay, then let's clean up your stuff first. Put your stuff in your bag.
So this has helped this student with transitioning and understanding her schedule, what's coming next. And this actually, so this app that I use, Touch Chat, is incredibly versatile. And so they can move the schedule around. And I know you're coughing right now. But Kevin also uses the same app for scheduling and...
Can we show that?
I don't know if you want to talk about it for a minute or...
With the iChat?
Yeah.
So the iChat...
Use the mic.
That's our assistive technology.
Can you hear me? With iChat, the idea is that, that it actually gives a child a voice. When I saw how it was programmed and how you can actually program the buttons, I started thinking of how I schedule my students and thought, "You can actually put in text or pictures, and then it's, it's a clean slate of being able to move everything around." And I move my schedule every day. So I thought, wow, this would be great. Well, that then morphed into, my students can use this to then move their schedules. So they have all the icons for their times, what their subjects are, and then they can actually open it up every morning and build their own schedule very easily just by sliding their, their schedule into place. So they're very active in doing that, and then they're able to just follow that visually. So, so it's, it's fun to find separate uses that you wouldn't expect otherwise. So it's been very good.
Thank you. This little guy started with his device last summer. And it's been amazing what he's, what he's done with it. Every, every week, I get to see him, and it's just phenomenal, the progress. So the original video was, he uses this to make telephone calls. And I didn't have that when we were really working on this learning. And he was having a really rough day, and I went in, and I just loved the way that he was using it to communicate.
Andrew, it's time to do some work now, okay? Yep, time to do some work.
No, stop.
I didn't understand you. Tell me what you want.
One more minute, please.
Oh, one more minute? Well, you know what? Today, we have, we have a lot to get done, okay? You had a minute before. I'm sorry. But I understand you want one more minute, but you'll get one later. All right. Okay. What we're going to do now is...
No, stop.
I don't understand. Tell me what you want. Oh, you want to play with cars?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that after this, okay? First, we're going to do our work where we do our six sentences, and then you can play with cars, okay?
Yeah.
See, number one, and then number two, cars. All right? Deal? What, tell me how you're feeling.
Mad. Frustrated.
Oh, mad and frustrated. I under...
Play tetherball.
You're playing tetherball? That's right. You are playing tetherball. Good job. We'll make a check. Let's see. I know you like the ones of you the best, right? We're going to do...
No, 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 no.
You can tell me you don't want that one.
I don't want that.
Okay. We won't do that one. We'll do...
No.
Not that one. That video, I mean.
Miss LaEason.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
No, you forgot the eating. Oh, I'm not eating, sorry.
Drinking.
My bad. Yep.
Lemonade.
That's right. I was drinking lemonade. How many more do we need to do? How many more?
Two.
That's right. We need to do two more, and then you get to play with me. Oh, how does that boy feel? Let's talk about it.
The boy, yes, scared. Mad.
He's mad. That's right. He is mad. Are you all done? Can you tell me?
I'm all done.
Okay, great. What do you want to do?
Can I have cars?
You want to do cars? Okay.
The, the progress on that board, I just, I just can't even tell you. It's, it's phenomenal. This little guy is in, he's one of our new three-year-olds. And he has some physical limitations. So we have some switch-adapted toys for him. And he also has a visual impairment. And so this actually was a day that our Besby, who's the blind education service provider from the state, came. And I was showing her, we have this new stand that I put on so that he could access the iPad. And then he also has a Bluetooth switch that he's hitting for this app.
Little Bear Seeds app.
What's it called?
Little Bear Seeds.
Little Bear Seeds?
And there's a, there's a free version, and then I like download or something.
When you say seeds, is it S seeds?
Yeah. Actually, I think I have it.
Hi!
Never mind. I was going to say, I think I have it on my phone. I think I...
So for hand, we have a lot of students who have difficulty with handwriting. Sorry. And I don't know if you want to say what you said to me earlier before I showed this about handwriting? The, the struggle of teaching them.
So as an OT, I work a lot with...
Oh, use the mic.
Oh, God. Okay. So a big area of occupational therapy is helping students access fine motor. And a lot of times in the schools, that translates, translates into helping them with handwriting. And I was around long before iPads, so I've done a lot of handwriting intervention, and I've used various programs. And I have to say, the iPad has just opened huge doors. And one of the bigger things is I have quite a few students that the struggle is the cognition that they have is unbelievable, and they have wonderful ideas. And unfortunately, the motor, motor piece of putting paper to pencil is just so difficult. And so they shorten their answers, they shorten their ideas, they do not write, you know, nearly what they're capable of. And so having the iPad and a lot of different apps, I've learned from Ashley, has just been really neat. There's so many, I don't know, there's so many components. That's good. Yeah. We'll start with that.
Okay. So really quickly, we do have some low-tech. This is actually an egg. Yeah. We do, we do have some low-tech. And then this is a Y pen for people who have difficulty with gripping regularly. This guy...
I'm in seventh grade. Using iPad makes my schooling easier by not having to write and using and typing on my iPad so my teachers can actually read what I, what I typed instead of writing, and then no one can read it.
Yeah, he's been using his iPad for about three years now. And you really can't read his writing, nor can you read his spelling.
He was one of my first iPads.
So he's, he's done a great job. And I just popped into his room one day, and I was like, "Tell me, you know, how you're using your iPad." And that's what he said. In the same room, this is another seventh grader. Again, he's had his iPad for three years. He was just kind of sitting there taking notes on it. And then just as an example of some more supportive writing is a Word chart. And then we also have an app that most, all of the students use, PDF Expert, where they can write and type on worksheets. And that has been just phenomenal. And I've actually had teachers like, "What is that? How can I get it?" Because it just, it changes, it changes everything for them. We do have some students who struggle with spelling. And I always tell them that I struggle with spelling, too. And so I'm a fan of technology myself. We have word prediction apps where the words come on the side. And that's actually pretty common now as the latest version of the iPad iOS now has the word prediction that pops right up. So, you know, it's not as special as it once was. Some students, they can record right into a worksheet, and it goes and gets emailed to the teacher, and the teacher just listens to it. So these are actual recordings right on a worksheet. And then this little guy's in fourth grade.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Nelson Simon, and I'm in fourth grade. And I like my iPad because it helps me type really fast and has spell check on it. And, um, let's see. I can do research projects on it, and I can do the S PAC on it. And yeah, that's what I like about this.
So he, he's actually a dictation student also. So he was dictating on the, on the S PAC because there is no word prediction on it. So it wouldn't have picked up his spelling. And he did say "research." He talks like a Boston accent. This is another, this is a third-grade student who has been dictating.
I like to play Skylanders Track Team because I am on the last level. And sometimes I don't like to play because my brother, James, and my other brother, Tommy, usually mess everything up. Period.
The, the hearing impaired teacher and I are really working with him on dictation. He actually said it in another portion of a clip, that it would take him literally five minutes to write down his assignments. And so if he can just take a picture or just dictate it, it's 30 seconds rather than five minutes. And he said that all himself, and it's, it's true. So he's doing, he's doing a great job with that. This student is using, we got her Weekend News actually from today, and the OT quickly typed in the sentence, and it comes up in a little grid. And she has to listen to the sentence and then press the parts of the sentence to put it together.
Where's earned? E, starts with an E. Earned iPad and, where's the word? And? And, whoops. And a cookie. Period.
I earned iPad and a cookie.
Good job. Do you want to read the whole thing? No, this one's just a new sentence. Do you want, remember how to make it read the whole thing?
Yeah.
What do we do? We hold it down and then let go, and now it speaks.
I watched Patty play T-ball. I earned iPad and a cookie.
Good job.
For reading, we have a lot of students who receive books on, from Bookshare. And Bookshare is free for students who qualify, and they have to have one of three qualifications, either a visual impairment, a physical impairment, or a learning disability such that they can't read at their grade level, but they can cognitively understand. So here's just some differences of how the students are reading their books, and a lot of visual differences there. For math, again, here are some examples of worksheets that we've taken a picture of. The kids have. They do a great job with it, and they can color in, they can type on it, they can draw on it. And the bottom where it says 6X to the fifth power is an app called My Script Math Pad. And the kids actually use their... and the kids actually use their fingers to write it, and it transposes it into text instantly, and they can put that right onto their worksheets. So even when teachers can't read their writing, this app, um, is picking it up. And so for those students in eighth grade and above, where they have to write long equations, this has been a huge, um, help to them. Um, so for organization and executive functioning, lots of different scheduling apps. Um, and again, low-tech, you know, we still have the picture schedules everywhere, um, and, uh, and then, you know, some higher-tech apps. Um, for learning and studying, we have, um, the, some kids take pictures of their assignment pads. Um, there's also an app, and this little guy, um, he just got his iPad, and I said, two days later, I said, "Bring, show me what you've done with your assignment pad," and he brought it to me, and he had all of his work on there. He never has his assignment pad, ever. He hasn't written down his homework all year, and so he had his homework written down, he had it crossed out when he was finished. He was very, very proud of that. Um, just in terms of accessing school, this little guy, um, he's so cute. He, um, needs to be videotaped. Either he gets videotaped, or he videotapes himself walking somewhere, and so this is just an example of an art class. The first part, they video him, um, painting.
Love to. Make sure you do two hands carefully.
That's him laughing. So he asks, "Can you videotape me?" So he can go do that, and the next step that he has to do is wash his hands.
What you're doing.
I washed my hands.
Great job.
Yay!
Okay, rub them together. Nice going.
And he was just about to ask, "Can I see it?" Um, and then this is the end of the art.
You know what I have for you today? An art star. Tyler, you know what you earned today? Art star! Good job, Tyler. I can't. I'm so proud of you. Let's go.
And then he will literally, he takes the iPad, and he videos walking back to his classroom. He finds his desk, um, and, you know, it may not sound like a lot to any of us, but it's huge getting him to transition and getting him to participate, um, in, in school and access his curriculum. So it's actually very exciting. Um, this is, back to our little three-year-olds, getting him in the stander. So, you know, a lot of people are like, "Why is a toy, you know, A.T.?" And I'm like, "That's, he's accessing his stander, and he has to be in his stander for, um, a certain amount of time, so it strengthens and lengthens his legs, and getting him to stay in there." You know, he's visually accessing this while he's, uh, standing. And then, um, we did get him a swing for his classroom, which is another way to, for him to transition and just be out of his wheelchair. He just does not like being in the wheelchair. So any way we can get him, um, a little bit more independent, uh, he loves it. Um, so for vision, um, yeah, so we have a couple of apps. One is Splash Top, where the iPad mirrors what's on the smartboard, so the students can be anywhere in the classroom, and it displays right on the smartboard, uh, right on their iPads. Um, there's magnifying glass apps for quick looking, and then this student actually has moved to two iPads because, um, when I was recently visiting him, I was like, "He can't see what he's writing." So we have, one is a resource for vision, and then one is for working, um, and he's, uh, he, I actually, um, saw him when he was in first grade, and he had a laptop back then, and so he's just reduced, uh, so much, and he actually also wears an FM system. So for hearing, um, an FM system, um, we have an app that records while the teachers are talking, and the students can go back and listen. Um, we also have the LiveScribe pen, which, um, some administrators are starting to use now. Um, so this was designed for students in college taking lecture notes, and as, um, it's a, so it's smart paper, and so as the lecture is, um, going on, the students can record, and they can write, and then they can go back later on and listen. And then they can go back later on. So anywhere they touch on this special paper, um, they can hear what was said at that exact time. So I know when I was in college and writing, you know, as fast as I can, I'm like, "What did that person just say?" You know, I wish I could've gone back to touch and, like, have that moment back in time. Um, and we do have a couple of high schoolers who use this, and one who actually uses it quite often, who just asked me for more ink. So, um, so that's a, that's another, um, another tool. Um, I was asked by one of the OTs to create a keyboard for the student to learn how to type their name, 'cause we wanna start getting the student into writing. And I was like, "All right, I, I can figure that out." And so my trusty app, my communication app, Touch Chat, I created, um, a keyboard, and, um, in this particular keyboard, uh, for this student, her name is highlighted, and just those letters speak.
A, G, D.
Where's A?
A, N, E.
Where's N?
N, A, Magna.
So she always gets excited when she finishes, and, um, so the student that I initially had created for, he's beyond the colors now, and this is really just a matter of weeks. Um, they said, "Can you come back and take the colors off and have all the letters speak?" And I said, "Sure, I can do that." Um, so he's, he's typing, and we're progressing that into writing. And again, that's one, um, a student who can't communicate, and these are students who really can't write as we would normally write, so, um, this is, this is how they're accessing, um, their curriculum. And another, um, writing and vision tool, this is a boogie board. Um, got it at Costco. Again, uh, really not meant for special ed, but it's a, uh, LCD writing pad. So, um, I actually used it last year for a student with vision impairment. All she could see was black and white, and all she could see was the white on black. And so rather than creating worksheets that were black with white print, we worked on this, and she could see it. Um, but the kids love it 'cause it races immediately, and it's like a nice whiteboard that doesn't, you don't have to worry about the markers and the eraser, and, um, so that's just, you know, another fun tool. Um, and then I do have some students who still use color overlays, to put over their work. Few and far between, but, um, they, they still use it, so. And really the reason I do what I do, I love the smiles, 'cause they're, they're just great kids, and, uh, so I'm always happy to help them. That's the end. Any questions?
Actually, one thing I, I just wanna say is, you know, one of the goals of the board over the years, we've always talked about, you know, the importance of making sure that every student that's enrolled in our system has access to equally high level of education. And it's so impressive to see your creativity and all the work that you've done to bring this assistive technology to our students, so that they can, each and every one of our children, and especially our more challenged students, um, can have access to that high-quality education. So it's really exciting to see, um, what some of these, these children are doing, and we all know the importance of self-esteem and self-confidence, especially as our, our students get older. And I can't help but think, as I'm looking at this and watching the reactions on, on the video there, um, in terms of what this is doing, this technology is doing, in terms of building these kids' self-esteem and their, and their self-confidence, and therefore are gonna have much more posi, you know, much positive, a very positive future, and are gonna do much better in life. So thank you, thank you all very much.
Just to add to that and reinforce the motivation, students get excited when they see, um, you know, the opportunities that are available to them.
You can see that in the tape, but I would say that that's only second to the enthusiasm and the motivation we see with you, because I think you are, you are equally as excited watching their faces as we all are, so that's so important.
Then the motivation is, uh, so key. I worked with one of my students for a year. We struggled forever to find a motivator that would really work, and, um, along came the iPad, and, uh, Lo and Behold found out that he was into WWF and Fox News. I mean, they're just like, you know, Wheel of Fortune. Well, all of a sudden, um, offering those at breaks on the iPad made all the difference in the world. Um, and not only in me being able to motivate him to, uh, uh, finish an assignment, but he's Mr. Smiley and happy and very excited to be able to work for that kind of reinforcement. And as a, as a teacher, I didn't have that the first year I had him, and the second year has just been unbelievable in the growth. So that just puts a big smile on your face right there, so it's very worth it.
Other questions or comments that anyone wants to make?
The only thing to me that's so interesting is how it reduces the frustration level for these students, and that if you find the right tool out of the vast array that you have, and that are gonna continue to be developed, all of a sudden you can take a frustrated, angry child, you know, with no peer relationships, and turn it around, and that is just, you know, very, that's fantastic, and it's great work to see, and, uh, thank you for bringing it to us.
One of the, um, one of the items, this is a swivel seat. Kevin asked if I took this from his kid. I didn't. Um, so a, a lot of times, kids would use wiggle, wiggle seats, and it didn't, to me, it didn't provide them enough movement. Like, they can wiggle, but they really can't move. And so, um, this is, um, made for older generation of, um, adults who need help getting out of cars. That's actually what this is. Um, yes, and, uh, so, but, um, the students put on their seats, and under their desks, they can swivel. And, uh, Kevin does have one student, he's gone through about two of these. He wears them out. But I don't care, because he's sitting in the classroom, and before this, he couldn't sit in the classroom, and he uses it on the floor just as much as on his chair. Um, and now that he's in the middle school, he's, you know, brings it to all of his classes, and I've said, "I can leave it," you know, "one in each class," and no, he carries it with him. So, um, but that's just, you know, a, a simple example of something that, you know, just, it, it, he just, he's happier with it.
I was struck as I watched particularly the students that were able to communicate with that, and I'm sure they hadn't been able to do it before you'd done the work with them that you've done and used the equipment that you've used, because it would seem so frustrating to have this all inside and not be able to say or to be able to do something that would enable someone to understand what I was trying to say and to be able to communicate orally, and the ones that are communicating in writing, uh, it really is just a huge step of help for the children, and I'm sure for the families, because how hard for them to also try to communicate and understand what the child wanted or how to help the student.
Hazel, there's, there's actually a wonderfully touching story, um, that I think Ashley told me a, a few months back about a child who was learning to use his augmentative communication device and was able for the first time to call his grandparents. Um, there was something in there about ice cream. I don't, I don't, I don't remember the rest of the story. But, oh, I think that was the prize the parents gave him, but how excited the family was that he could actually speak to his grandparents on the telephone. Um, very touching.
Well, I'm very touched also that you all see that those small steps grow and grow and can understand how important they are. They're really as big as this room when they're just maybe this small on a piece of paper or on a device that you're using. And I appreciate the talent and the motivation you have to work with kids to help them raise themselves as high as they possibly can, or beyond what anyone would have ever thought possible.
We're just through the budget season, but I'd like to take this moment to thank you for all of the FM systems and the iPads and the apps, and all the funny things that are sitting over there on that table that you've supported, because, uh, you know, they, we apply a lot of resources to this, and, uh, it, it can be costly, but we all feel that it's so necessary, so helpful, and the kids are learning, uh, so much more than they would've as a result of this. So thank you to you for supporting all of this, and we'll try and keep up all of their good work. And thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for utilizing all these devices, and the ones particularly that I'm sure some of the companies don't realize what you're doing. And it might be, maybe there's, uh, uh, some sort of financial stream on that that we might be able to tap into.
We'll look into that, Hazel.
And just, just a very, very quick comment, just how impressive it is to see the team, so many of you here tonight to support and be a part of the, the presentation here. The, you know, truly, as teachers, we always hope and plan and, and work hard to try to improve our, our students' lives, you know, one way, and as an English teacher, I always did in different things. But when you look at the work that you're doing, as you mentioned in the introduction a little bit, I mean, you truly are changing children's lives, you know, improving children's lives, and, and family lives. You know, for these, these children who for the first time can communicate to their brothers or sisters or parents and teacher, and share their emotions, share their feelings. I had a, once again, I had, uh, got goosebumps, had another experience watching the video, just how truly moving it is, the work that you do. And it really, I think, speaks so much about our values as a school system and our commitment to, um, doing the very best we can for every single one of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking now at our agenda. It's such an exciting thing to be watching. It's, it's hard to find anything else as exciting. Although, we have Ms. Harris on the, on the, we have Ms., Dr. Lutze, you, I think, are next with the budget update.
I am happy to. As you say, there's nowhere to go but down from what we just saw. The, I thought it'd be a good time to give a quick update on where we are as far as the sixteen, fifteen, sixteen budget. Uh, as we mentioned before, we're, we're in the midst of some meetings and discussions and conversations, but I thought that, um, just to give you a quick update, we're not looking for any action at, on this at this point. Uh, we'll continue to talk to the Ed Resources Subcommittee, uh, and, and we're, as we continue to work also with the Central Office Administrators, the Building Administrators and others. Uh, but just to, as you know, our proposed amount was reduced, uh, in the operating here. We were looking to, uh, find $340,000, and that has to do with the $240,000 cut from the, or reduction from the Board of Finance, and then the other $100,000 reduction from the Town Council. Uh, the, so what we did was we took a look through our current accounts and the status of those accounts today, uh, and took a few other factors into consideration. Uh, for instance, with the custodial overtime, we brought that down by $15,000 due to the addition of a custodian at Saks next year, uh, which was in the budget and is included, so we believe that, that's something we can do. Uh, the legal matters, taking that down $40,000. Uh, we've, we're very close to settling now with, uh, two of our uni, our unions that we were talking about earlier, uh, and so we're comfortable doing that. And as you said, we tried to apply some logic to all of it. Repairs to vehicles. We are purchasing new vehicles, uh, as you know, with the, uh, well, Roy, Roy had been coming to speak with us earlier in our budget workshop. So we're actually in the process right now. We're processing those for new vehicles. Um, and so we'll have those, so we believe the repairs should go down. Uh, and then postage, recruiting, um, we, uh, bringing that down a little bit because we feel confident that we won't be recruiting a high-level position next year, though we never know. And then instructional supplies, office supplies, again, that comes from looking at where we are today with our budget and projecting that out a little bit. We are also, we've been talking with our, um, with the Building Administrators and in the secretarial, uh, positions here at the high school, we have a retirement. So we're looking at finding some efficiencies there in those positions and doing some restructuring. Uh, of course, we would focus on service delivery to our students and our families and ensuring that there's no, no decrease in that, but we think there are some efficiencies there that, uh, that we can find, thanks to the retirement that's happening at the high school. Of course, nobody, we, nobody loses a job, nobody loses a paycheck. You know, we're just looking to kind of, uh, reassign some responsibilities there, and that, there's partial savings there. We have the turnover from our retirements, as we've been talking about, uh, in our other meetings earlier, so that is, is, totals out at our $340,000. Uh, and so again, this is, we're not looking to act on this. I just wanted to give you a quick update to let you know that we are continuing our discussions and working together at the district level and at the building level to identify the, um, you know, the best paths forward.
Does anyone have any questions about this? I had a question. Would you go over again about the custodial overtime and, and that, that $15,000?
Sure. We are in the budget. We are, in the budget, we're hiring another, a custodian for Saks Middle School. So by bringing another person on board, it'll help us in our coverage and the work that we have to do. And we also have a little bit more flexibility with new hires. So that added flexibility with the new hire should help us to be able to bring down some of the overtime that we're experiencing now.
That sounds good. I was concerned about the numbers of students and being sure that we were covered adequately, adequately.
Well, as you know, it's always an itemized estimate.
Yes.
You know, as we look at these things and do it. But, you know, we feel pretty comfortable at this point. We'd be okay. And if we weren't and it was something we had to do for our students, we would look to make up the difference somewhere.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or thoughts about this?
And you're certainly welcome to send questions to me or to the Ed Resources Subcommittee for more discussion. In upcoming meetings, we'll be looking to, to make a motion and act upon it.
Well, we realize this is.
But we're still in discussion.
Yes, well, we realize this is difficult, but it, I can see a lot of thought and effort has gone into it to try and find areas that hopefully will not be touching the educational experience that we're hoping for the students.
Yeah, and that's definitely our goal in all of these.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. And I guess we would then move on to the next agenda item, which is Statement of Accounts. Ms. Harris?
Well, good evening, everyone. You have, before you, the Statement of Accounts for April 30th. And I pushed through, since I'm not going to be at your next board meeting, which is when I would normally provide the Statement of Accounts. And so I apologize, I did not put the little footnote talking about the excess cost before it gets posted. I will make sure that I put the annotation, expected transfer reimbursement on excess costs. So I do apologize, this was hot off the presses by 10 of 7. So I, I'll fix it. Frank and I have gone over this a number of times, as Dr. Lutze and I have as well. You'll notice that at this point in time, we're starting to really get a much better sense on a lot of the different accounts that make up the bits and pieces of discretionary expenditures. Again, as I mentioned last month, we're focusing in, and oh, by the way, we're planning on going live this week on our payroll. And we're continuing to go through person by person to make sure that they're charged to the appropriate accounts. This gives us a wonderful opportunity to take what has been for the last decade or more and really do a more in-depth analysis. I know I did the aides, I did a number of them, and Frank will be picking up on that as well, by type of account. So you're seeing that we're, we're getting a little more fine-tuned on that as well. And the Tyler folks are with us today and tomorrow and have already worked with Frank and our accountant Eugenia Lipinski in talking about the actual encumbrance of salaries. So while you didn't see me do my happy dance today, I was doing my happy dance because it is a major flaw that has existed for decades, when 65% of your budget is people and you don't have a system that actually encumbers for every person that is employed. And so again, the business office team and the HR team have worked really, really hard. So I'm expecting to see by the end of this week, at least a preliminary encumbrance. And I, if you see fireworks over 39 Locust, it's me.
Celebrating.
It's me. So that's a very exciting aspect. I would like to draw your attention to page three of six. Again, I had mentioned to you last month that our unemployment compensation was extraordinarily low. And this one, I am really quite comfortable with. We've been monitoring the monthly payments to unemployment and we feel that we're really right on target. So if you want to draw a circle around that number or asterisk it in some way, because the new agenda item really affects that line item. I would also bring you to page five of six. Frank and I have been working on tightening up the projections for transportation, the regular transportation. And you will notice there that we're looking at a potential surplus or fund balance of So again, I want to draw your attention to that for, and so just keep that in mind after I've finished this. Or Ryan, would you like me to kind of jump around a little bit to talk about why I want those two to pay it to?
Sure, why don't you?
Okay. As we have been working very, very hard to try and bring the Saks remediation to fruition. And we had been told by the Board of Finance that there were hard choices to be made and that they recommended that we look to our own budget to find a way to fund the Saks remediation. So one of the things that Brian, or Brian and I will talk you through, which is the second attachment to the revised agenda, are some transfers from our capital projects. But in order to get to yes, which is our estimated $750,000, we couldn't get to yes without allocating some of our general fund money. And since these two accounts are solid accounts with fund balances, we're going to recommend to the board that you authorize me to make a transfer into project work by $100,000, taking $70,000 from unemployment and $30,000 from regular transportation, setting it up as project work within the Board's General Fund, so that the first dollars that we expend on the Saks remediation will be paid for from the Board's General Fund. That will leave $650,000 to be found from other accounts. So having said that, and I'm sure that there's going to be some interesting discussion about that, but I wanted to point out those two accounts because they're solid. There's a good reason to expect that these projections will stay right on the money. The other page that I wanted to draw your attention to, and you can see it on the summary as well, is the negative $611,711, which indicates on page five of six also that in our tuitions, we are $759,532 in the red. I did send over to Dawn today a non-salaries listing of accounts, which indicated without salaries, we are $854,000, all expenditures that are coded to special education. And so I wanted her to take a look at that, if the format works for her, so that we could then get to yes in terms of the first payment on the excess cost being transferred over to the Board of Education. So we're, I've come up with something, I've sent it over to her, so hopefully we'll have a positive dialogue over the next couple of days on that. The last thing that I wanted to point out, obviously, is that the anticipated deficit has been reduced. However, should the Board choose to authorize me to move the $100,000 from those two accounts into the project work, that deficit will go up by $100,000. So there's a cause and effect. I'm not anticipating expending any more dollars out of those two accounts, but should you give me the authorization to create that project in the Board's General Fund, then we will fully expend that $100,000, which will then create an additional $100,000 deficit. It is not impacting special ed accounts, which is where the excess cost needs to come in. So let me stop there, and I'm sure there's questions.
Yes, Jean.
With the proposed $530,000 deficit, what is the excess cost grant reimbursement expected from the town?
Well, um.
Expected, as I said, not guaranteed or otherwise.
I would expect at a minimum, the first payment of $575,000 that has already been received by the town.
So let's just say 575?
Well, up to. Because, again, I haven't gone through all of the salary accounts nor the benefit accounts. And there may be some fund balances in several of the salary accounts. So it'll, it'll be pluses and minuses, I'm sure.
But if it was 575, then we would have a, not a negative balance, but a positive balance of, I think it was.
It would be about $45,000.
Forty-five, $45,000, okay.
Yes.
And I was not at the Board of Finance. Did the Board of, I thought the Board of Finance approved the remediation project?
They approved the $120,000 that we had requested. So what you see here is a transfer form. And actually, what I did was go through all of the FY15 capital non-recurring accounts. All of those that say O3O are capital non-recurring accounts. And I scraped up $697, $509, $5902, $50. Those are the ending balances, the fund balances in each of those accounts, so that we could transfer them into the Saks Auditorium remediation account. The controversial ones, or the ones that the Board is going to want to discuss, will be the last four. You will see that we're suggesting, because we were ready to give it up for remediation before, and we are still saying it is the highest priority for us for this summer. So to take some of the painting money that they gave us back and move it into the remediation account, that, they gave us $120,000, and I'm suggesting $110 of it be moved into Saks remediation.
That's the building maintenance.
Building maintenance, that's really the painting. I, I think of it as painting. The West Gym floor, I think I had mentioned to you that we've got a little bit of a conundrum.
A hole in the floor with water.
We've got water. And so we are going to, we are not going to be able to fix that floor this summer. We are going to have to hire an engineer, deal with all of the hydraulics of that site. I've left enough money in that account to hire an engineer so that we can find out what is happening and then start developing a plan to fix it. But we're not going to get to it this summer in terms of just fixing the floor. It's not going to be the straight vanilla, take up the rubberized floor, rough up the cement underneath it. So it seemed like a reasonable thing to say, since we're not going to do that project in total, that we would get it ready and then move forward at a different time. And then the East curb repair and the West curb repair, those also are items that were added, they were taken out of our FY16 capital request and moved into 2015. So let me stop there.
Back to the future.
Let me stop there.
So I could then take that I believe that the $26,000 item and the $20,000 items were, since you, RICs is as different, that the other ones in fact were, that the jobs were done?
Yes.
And these were funds?
Those are balances.
That were left over? Okay.
Balances available so that.
Those projects are not suffering then?
They are, they are not impacted at all.
Thank you.
I think there's a question about the gym.
Yes. I have a couple of questions, actually. You know, it's, a couple of the items on this list are pretty disturbing that we're pushing off. I mean, the Saks, or the South School Playground has been on the list for two years.
But actually, the, everything down to the demand meter install?
Yep.
Everything above that, 277, will be, will be completed, is being done. Those are all balances. So if you go from the demand meter install up.
Those are gonna.
Those are all, all those projects will be completed. Those are balances remaining.
Okay.
It's the four below, the painting, the West Gym floor, and then the curb repair.
Okay.
That was, they were all in our 1516 requests.
Okay.
And then they, they funded them with fund balance and other things in this year's, along with the $598,000 security request that we had, which is not touched in any of this. That was, we're going to still do that entire project as proposed. So the security's still moving forward. But these other, these other four items were in our 1516. They had, they felt comfortable funding it this year, but then given this request and the size of this request, felt that.
Yeah.
We should change, change that approach.
With the West Gym floor replacement on that, on that list, so are you saying that we wouldn't have been able, with time, to be able to get to that this summer?
We would not be able to do that gym floor replacement this summer. We have not yet engaged an engineer to even deal with the hydraulics of whatever's happening there. So.
This may not be enough. You know, it was $125,000 that was appropriated, and that would have handled it if it were in good shape and we're switching, you know, pulling up the old, as Nancy mentioned. But it's what I think will likely occur. We'll have the engineer come, do the study, and then we'll have the whole proposal together, and we'll look to do it next summer in our 1516 capital.
So having not been in West School for ages, what does that mean for programming at West?
We'll continue to patch and we'll continue to monitor it because of the delamination of the rubber to the cement. And again, obviously, there's a moisture issue there.
Yeah, that's my.
We're, we're doing small patches and some of them lift up and then we put some more patches down. Almost like if, if you have bicycle tires and you put patches on them, this is a rubberized floor. And what you do is you take small pieces and you glue them down. And so you, you keep as smooth a surface as possible in order to do that.
So it's still, it's still going to be safe for the students?
Yes.
Because the surface is clear.
Yes.
Yes. Penny?
So have we gotten an estimate about how long it would have taken to do the West Gym floor replacement?
We have not gotten an engine, we have not yet engaged an engineer. We cannot move forward on this project until we engage an engineer.
Right, so I guess what I've been.
So preliminarily in the project, I'm sorry, Penny, but. So, preliminarily in the project, I'm sorry Penny, but preliminarily, we had some samples done, as we did at Saks and the auditorium and others with Ty and Bond, and when they did those samples, that's when we became aware of the, the need to hire an engineer to do that work. So, it was given that, the, because of the moisture, that we, because as they courted into it, they found the moisture, so that's where we had to say, okay, hold on, we're not, this is more than just a gym floor replacement, that there may be some other things, that other engineering, things that need to occur.
They took, they took from different corners, in hidden corners, so that it wouldn't impact, and those core borings filled up with water. So, we're, what we had anticipated when we put forward this project can't occur until we find out the base problem.
So, it had to be broken into two years anyway, because it was just going to take too long.
And we don't know what the solution is going to be, because we really have to, we know the, we know the symptom, we simply do not know the cause. And part of that may also be part of the groundwater issue that we experienced about a month...
April 1st.
April 1st, as well, again, because there's something going on at that site. So, we really must fi, they're just symptoms, and we can't put Band-Aids on those kind of symptoms.
And there's just no schedule and no dollar project definable at this point in time.
Exactly.
Yes, yes.
Diana? But you said we have enough money left in the account to hire an engineer?
Yes.
And when will that take place?
We will probably hire, be doing some interviews, and we'll, we will ask Ty and Bond if they've got any suggestions, because this really is hydraulics. It's way out of my wheelhouse. Bob probably has some experience with it, but I'm not sure where we're going to find that. So, we'll ask some of our experts, can you recommend who we should talk to?
I'm more interested in timing than who you actually, I mean, sort of where in the project list are we, sort of, I'm just looking for the immediacy and, and, you know, I mean, I'm sure parents are going to be interested in knowing, you know, when that engineering study's going to be done, and...
Well, and fortunately, we're not in a situation where the gym is closed.
Right.
You know, we still have access, and Bob and his crew, they're keeping up with it. But it certainly does need, I mean, it needs to be done, you know, and that's why, why it's on there. I could see, and timeline-wise, I could see that work beginning in the summer, you know, and engaging someone to do some of the walkthroughs and to begin, but I, I don't think it's going to be, take a look or two, and then here's the plan. I think it may take a while to fully understand the, the kind of complexity of the site. You know, the way West School is structured, you've got the gym all the way up top, and then there are classrooms and a sort of steps down the hill, but there are, there are wetlands back there. You know, there, there are a lot of, a lot of variables to sort of learn about and try to control for. So, I think that what I would anticipate would be, when we put together our proposal for the 1617 budget, our goal would be for this work to be done in the summer of 16 over there. And then, so we would have it in that budget, and then move forward and plan, plan around that. So, we just, we put it off one year, so that we can do the study that we need to do in order to, to know what the scope is and what the costs would be, and the work that needs to be done, so.
Interesting problem.
Facilities work.
Yes. Does anyone have any other questions about that?
Well, I do have a question about it, because, you know, I think that, obviously, there's no problem with the, the first items and the remaining balances being transferred to the Saks remediation. I certainly agree that the Saks remediation of the auditorium is a, you know, a very high priority, but it seems to me that we should have a discussion with the Board of Finance, just so that they know, if it was the Board of Finance that determined that this was the source that the fund should come from, that we should have a discussion with them and say, look, the only way that we can get there is to take these funds that we've all discussed about, and you've agreed to allocate, you know, you had wanted us to allocate, I know they wanted us to do the painting, I'd like to do the painting. You know, I think that the curbs need repair, or we wouldn't have put it in, and we, these were all safety items, and I'm a little concerned that we're kind of running down the balance, or transferring the balance on the gym floor replacement, when there might be, we might be having to have to return to the town bodies for, you know, emergency funds, depending upon what the nature of the problem is. So, it just seems to me that before we, you know, do that, we need to talk to them and say, I don't know what the finances of the town are, all these projects are very important, we just want you to understand that these are the best, you know, in a lot of poor choices, this is the, this is the best that we can come up with, if you're comfortable with it.
It's the best of the worst.
Right, it's the best of the worst, so, as, as Bill Walbert says, we're trying to, what, minimize our maximum regret. But I think that they need to know, because I don't know with the overall town, you know, I don't know if this is what you're, if you're taking this to them tomorrow night?
I am, yeah, and you're certainly all welcome to come, and everyone is, but tomorrow night, I am going to the, to the Board of Finance to share this information with them and to, and also let them know that the, these items aren't disappearing. You know, they were funded this year because they're high priority items. These are items that we feel strongly we need to accomplish. So, it may be that in a few months, we may go back and say, can we now do, get the funding for the East curb, for the West curb, you know, and doing that, it's not necessarily going to wait until the next budget cycle in 1617. And I've already had that conversation with Dawn, and she understands that as well. The, for the total number of 740, you know, there are the, the pieces that we've discussed, and then also, we are, the Board of Finance, and I think it's personally Malazi will be recommending tomorrow night to transfer some money in a similar way out of a town capital item that was approved, was again, requested for next year and approved in this year's money, to, to cover the difference between what we don't have and we can't, can't make up in ours, which is a little under $100,000. So, we're making these, we're certainly finding the majority of the, the requests here and piecing it together, but I think the, the First Selectmen's prepared to put in a little bit too, to try to make the, to account for the entire 740. The, there's also, you know, for the remediation, as we've discussed, there's a 20% reimbursement that we look for on this project, and that's why we did spin it off separately, and we're doing it in this way. So, there'll also be, you know, another $150,000 or so if we spend the full 740, that would come back to the town in reimbursement.
Well, so I guess my other question is, I'm sorry, was that on the excess cost grant?
No, no, the reimbursement on the remediation work.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, right. But, so I, I guess I'm back to the regular operating budget and the reimbursement on the excess cost grant, and if we were, if we were getting $575,000 from the town for the excess cost grant for the first payment, but there are additional funds that the town got for the excess cost grant, I don't, how much did those total, and could we ask the town to transfer those over? If that's another $100,000, then we could actually...
Over, over to what?
Transfer to the operating budget.
For?
Fiscal year 2015.
For special ed?
For the, for the overage of special ed, and then you could...
These are capital.
No, I understand, but to fund this, we're being asked to make a line item transfer, $100,000 from our operating budget to the remediation for Saks.
That's going to stay in our operating budget. It's going to go into a project work line in our operating budget.
Okay.
And then, the first $100,000 of bills or things that come in will be charged against that.
All right, so, I guess what I'm asking, because I'd like to save the East and West curb repair, is if there were an additional $100,000 that were going to come to the, that we could apply to the town to have trans, because we've made those, we've had that overage, and we have a, the deficit in the excess cost grant line is more than $575,000.
Well, the, I will need to tally up 100% of all budgets and expenditures for special ed on a line-by-line basis. What I did was the non-salary, non-benefit, as a way for Dawn to take a look at the format. So, it, I'm not sure where we're going to end up. We will end up in a deficit in special ed, but I don't know what the total amount is yet.
I think Nancy, Penny's question would be, though, if, in fact, there's money there as an example, $750,000 over, over John special ed, and this money is sitting at the town, and if we requested $750,000, could in some way that money be used to, to prevent these delays, these items being delayed?
Right.
They're totally different funding sources.
That's what I think. These are capital, and those are operating.
They are totally different funding sources, so, as much as I'd like to tell you yes, I'd have to tell you no.
Wait, no, but I don't, I guess I don't understand it, because we're transferring $100,000 into the line, into the line item for...
Project work in the general fund.
Okay, so what I...
We are not changing our appropriation, nor would we ever.
All right, so what I, okay, so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the line item that says we have a $750,000 deficit in other purchase services, which I believe largely relates to special ed, and I know you haven't tallied everything up, and that we're at the point where we're asking for $575,000 from special ed, but if there's more money that would come, and so we're taking other funds where we have balances in our operating budget and transferring it to that, I'm sorry, what's the...
Project work.
Project work, I'm writing it down, so I don't keep, can't we find, if we have more money we can get from the town, why couldn't we transfer $200,000 to project work? And therefore, we would not have to take as much from painting and East curb and West curb repair. That's my, that's just, that's my question. Sorry it took me so long to get it out. I need one of those assistive technology devices.
Did you have a response to that?
Well, I'd like to first get an agreement that we're getting $575,000. We're not there yet.
I think the question is just if, in other words, if, if, if we got 750, if, could we transfer any balances finally at, at the end of the year into the project work, and then reduce what we have to take out from these other four items?
We'd have to go back to the Board of Finance, because this is a physical transfer.
And I think it may be a timing issue, as far as the reimbursement costs and when they come through.
Well, forgetting the timing, you're just talking about the theory, the theory of it. Is project, is, is project work something, is that operating?
We have it in operating, yes.
Okay, how much do we have in operating on the remediation effort? Is it $100,000, and that's it?
If you authorize me to transfer those, that 70 and that 30, we will have $100,000 for Saks remediation in project work.
Is project work a capital?
We've had some debates about that.
Could project work be $200,000?
If, if we...
I...
I'm not sure.
I would like to have the money in the account before counting on being able to transfer it over there, meaning in the, in the operating budget itself. And I, I understand the theory that you're, you're, you're discussing and proposing, however, you know, we know that we have this 100, the 100,000 that we're discussing?
This is theory, so we don't have to know, we're just discussing the theory.
Well, we do, because tomorrow night, I would be, I'll be going to the Board of Finance to have the, the transfer approved, I hope, so that we can then engage the services and keep things moving for the summer. So, we are on a little bit of a timeline around that. The, the 100,000 we're talking about, I mean, we've got the two sources for them, both with the transportation and with the, what specifically is it? It's... Unemployment, I always mix that up.
Okay, so you seem to be saying...
So, we know that that's there, I'm sorry, so that we're comfortable, I'm comfortable doing that in the others, but there's...
So, we seem to be coming to the conclusion I'm getting, I'm hearing, finally, is that this theory is, it's premature, because there's timing issues, there's approval issues, there's money issues, that we should just wait to see a little bit further how this plays out and what our options might be.
I don't know, I think, I think they actually need the funds, they, in terms of, we need to make some transfers and approvals tonight.
Well, let me give you a timeline.
Yes, and then the question is, could we, could we substitute, after this decision's made, could we do some substitution by going back to Board of Finance or something else? But there's no sense doing that until there's some more clarity as to whether the funds are there and everything else.
There, there may be an option. We do have some pretty tight timelines. We have scheduled a planned completion meeting at the State Department of Education for May 26th. That requires a completed application in order for them to consider a PCT meeting, which means all of the funding must be in place.
No, I think I understand fully.
No, okay.
Fully now, there's a lot of variables, and until we get a handle on some of these variables, it's, it's kind of time-consuming to discuss possibilities when we don't have the variables, handles on the variables.
Sure. And there is an advantage to doing it this way with the transfers versus asking for an appropriation in the timing and the posting requirements and the, the two weeks in the paper for the appropriation, things like that. So, that's, I think this is another, because of that timing, it helps us in that way, too.
Another plus. Allison, I see your hand up.
Yeah, actually, that helped me a little bit with this, because I had a little bit of a bigger issue with this, and I was going to ask you to, to help me out on this, because to me, this kind of flies in the face of the multiple discussions we had throughout the entire budget season with the funding bodies from the town, because as we passed the budget through the Board of Selectmen and the, the Board of Finance and the Town Council, you know, we repeatedly heard, you know, we'd like you to come with kind of a bare-bones budget, and then if you need money, please come back to us, and we will give you that money, obviously, and under legitimate circumstances. So, I'm a little bit perplexed in terms of, we've gone to them with asking for remediation money, it's a project that we were all aware was going to happen, and it sounds like, from what we're saying, and I apologize, I wasn't able to be at the meeting, that we were asked to come up with the money rather than them granting us the money. So, this kind of seems to fly in the face of what the recommendations have been in the past, and when I look at this, these, these four projects that we're talking about, these four capital projects that aren't going to be completed, are four capital projects that not only the Board passed, but they all passed through the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Town Council, because we all know they have the ability to cut our capital projects individually. So, that's 310 of that 300 and almost $68,000, and then, in turn, we're being asked to then pull $100,000 out of our operating budget. So, if that's the issue, if it's a timing issue, that we can't ask for an appropriation, that makes a little bit more sense to me, but I'm just more concerned about the process in general, that we've gone back to the town with a legitimate project that has to be done, and rather than being granted that money, we're being asked to come up with it ourselves, which is just, again, a concern to me based on the discussions we had with the town bodies throughout the entire budget season, so, is it, so, is this more of a timing issue? Is that why we're not going for an appropriation, or did we go for Board of Finance to ask for appropriation for this?
No, this is in conversation with the First Selectmen and me back and forth. That, the timing was a significant part of the discussion. There also was part of the discussion around the, the feedback that, were they aware of the, the architectural costs and this coming simultaneously at this point, that they may not have funded next year's capital request using this year's balance in the way that they did, feeling that they, it sort of caught them by surprise a little bit, and asking if we could, could help them to make up that difference. So, there, those two pieces, I think the, certainly the timing is a, is a big part of it, right? Not having to post in the paper for the two weeks and go through that process helps us to keep things moving along very quickly. But the, and the other part of the discussion was that, that had we known that, and for just fate, I guess, the, the numbers are very similar, there's 740 here, and it was about that for the, the architectural fees, so, felt that...
Wait, it was, it's all the pre-construction fees, I just want that to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just, just for clarity.
Yes, the pre-construction fees.
For the pre-construction fees, estimate.
So, we felt that it would help us to keep this moving forward.
Okay, because, I mean, obviously, and we've stated this before, these are not choices that would be made by the Board if we didn't have to make these choices. These are, these are all projects that are going to have to get done anyway.
All right, these aren't disappearing.
Right, right.
And it may not, they, they may not wait until next budget cycle, that may be that we're going sooner. For instance, there, one of the things that is, is on the list, is of sort of getting to the 740 total, is a CLMP rebate check of $24,000. So, that's due to some of the energy conservation work that we've done, and generally, that money gets, is turned over to the town, and that's what we do. In conversation, we said, we want that, can, can that go towards the 740? And the answer was, yes, you know, let's put that, let's work together and pull those things in, so that, as other... So, that, as other checks come through, it may be that, some of that, we can go and request the same thing for the east curb repair or the west curb repair and things like that, so.
So, that was my other question, is then, I assume that everybody's in position, knowing that we're going to be coming back to the, to the town bodies, looking for this money, because these are all, like I said, these are high priority, high priority projects.
That's why we funded them this year.
Right, right, so that's why I have a little bit of a difficulty giving up that money, knowing that, what we had to go through to get that money in the first place.
Can I just, I mean, I'm, I know you all have been negotiating this, but it does seem to be sort of two different buckets, and I know that the costs for the SACS building committee can be bonded, and that it'll all be rolled into a bonded project. Whereas, I don't know if, are these projects that, we, we wouldn't have been bonding the east curb repair, the west curb repair, the building maintenance-
None of that is bonded money.
None of that's bonded money. So, I mean, I think it's sort of just coincidental that the, the two amounts are similar.
It is.
But they're very, I'm not quite, anyhow, I just wanted to point out, for what it's worth, that the SACS building committee is going to be bonded.
Right, so very different discussions.
So, it might be a cash flow issue, but it's not coming out of the operating budget for next year. Whereas, I understand these funds, you know, would be coming out of the operating budget.
Yes, Deanna?
I don't need to bring up an old subject, but it seemed, I really liked Penny's suggestion about appro, it, it is beyond frustrating to me to continue to see the account deficit in the other purchase services from October of 2014, and maybe even in September, okay? So, it is, I mean, I'm, the, we've been very, very patient in this process, but now I'm getting a little impatient, because we're now in, you know, May, and I, I see a 700, and I can't see that without my glasses on, you know, 750,000. Do you know what the town actually has in its account from the excess cost?
It was about 575,000 that came in.
That's, that was for last month, for the March?
It comes in, in February, the end of February, and then the last piece of it comes in, in June.
And, so, I mean, I, I think if we offset with those funds, so, I mean, I think it may prove fruitful to have at least the discussion with the Board of Finance, at least, because I don't know that, you know, we, we haven't elevated it to the, you know, it-
Are they aware of it?
Yeah.
Are they aware of it?
Is the Board of Finance aware of the excess cost issue? I mean, I-
We discussed it, I think, a bit as we went through our budget, and we talked about going from net to gross and where we are.
Well, yes, but are they, are they fully aware of what's going on this year?
That the money's sitting there.
They receive our statement of accounts each month.
Well, I've, I've heard that they haven't seen them, so.
I can, I'm happy to bring it up tomorrow night.
I think it, I think we're at the point that it needs to be brought up. I, I think we've been very patient, and, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, when we're being asked to come up with pretty significant dollars out of our operating budget, I think that there's money sitting there that needs to be transferred to the board, and we've been very patient. And I, you know, I mean, when, when this has been going on since October of the fall, and we're now almost at the end of the school year, and it hasn't been resolved, I think we've been too patient. And I think we need to say, you know, there's money sitting there to be transferred to the board, and, and that could be used to offset our operating budget and, and to, I mean, I think Penny's suggestion was excellent, and, you know, and it kind of speaks to what Allison was saying, is that, you know, we, we, we did budget, you know, as close to what we could, and, and, you know, I think it's important to say, you know what? There are other places to find this, and so, I don't know, that's why.
Did you have a response, Ms. Harris, or, okay? Nope. Dr. Litzey, do you have a response or?
Well, I, just that I will be speaking with the Board of Finance tomorrow night, and I'm happy to, to share that a little bit in the process that we've been going through with the excess costs and the reimbursement and where we are with it. The, and to, you know, share some of the discussion, and then, I mean, with your understanding, the board's understanding, that at this point, you know, we would go forward with what's on that transfer sheet, but if something were to change, then we would, you know, go back and, and have that discussion with them as well, and I'm happy to do that.
And the resolution that, the draft resolution that we forwarded for consideration by the Board of Finance and the Town Council, because we need to have the Town Council approve the resolution, you know, because they are the ultimate funding body, the elected funding body, was not a specific amount from the Board of Education's general fund, so that it could go up, should, should that become available, certainly.
Sure, we'd love to protect these, you know, the capital items that are, have been approved, we'd love, we would like to see them done as well. You know, I think, I agree how important they are. The reason they were funded in this year's budget was because we said, these are the, you know, what, these are the most important things, these are the things we want to have done, we need to have done. So, the, the curb repair, the other work. So, yeah, we will be open as time goes on, as we get closer to it, to do what we can and do what's, what, what's available to us. We do, I would ask the board to consider the motion that's in the revised agenda around the, the transfer at least of, of the 100,000.
I saw Allison's hand up, did you want to add something, Allison, or go on to the motion?
No, we'll go on to the motion.
Okay.
So, I, just one question, if the town has received 575,000 in February, and they're going to get another payment in June, have we already applied for the payment in June?
No, the process that the CFO is requiring is an accounting of budgeted special education costs and expended special education costs. So, what I sent her today were all the non-salaries, and then I will go through 100%, or Frank and I will go through 100% of the special ed salaries and do exactly the same. Then we'll need to look at budgeted for benefits as well, because if we're going to include salaries, then we also have to include budget for benefits.
No, I appreciate you all doing that. I guess what I was asking is, I don't think that's the process, it's my understa, that's not the process you have to go forward through with the state to get the excess cost grant money, is it? Or so, when we, so we apply separately to the state for the excess cost grant money?
Yes, we do.
Isn't that correct?
We do, but it goes to the town, and then the CFO has determined that we need to document why we should receive X dollars.
Before we apply to the state?
No, no. It's automatically applied through Darlene's office as all of our high-cost students.
Right, so that's, I guess what I was asking, Darlene, if you know, and you weren't, you didn't come prepared to answer this tonight, so if you don't know, that's fine, too, is what amount of money have we applied for as a district for, to have the state return to the town?
About 679,000.
So, there would be, if, if they agreed with, if the state agreed with that accounting, then in addition to the 575, there would be another 100 and, 104,000.
If our total budget is that much less than our actual expenditures.
Total budget, not special ed.
If our special ed budget-
Total special ed.
Total special ed budget is that much lower than we could receive up to that 679,000.
Right, under the accounting principles between the Board of Ed and the Town of New Canaan.
Right.
But in any event, the Board of Finance could be advised that there is 679,000 that's coming to the town from the state.
And I believe that that was explained to the Board of Finance when we were talking about the differences between gross and net, and that the CFO had indicated that she had booked it as revenue for the town.
All right, thank you for all of that clarification.
I think we then have the motion, yes, yes.
I just wanted just to clarify, and I know we're almost done with this subject, but is it, my understanding correct, that in the past, this money has just flowed from the town back to the board?
Up until last year. Last year, we had enough funds to deal with all of our expenditures, so we did not request the funds.
Okay, so this new procedure, what you're talking about in terms of us basically having to legitimize our request for the money-
Is, is new this year.
Is brand-new this year. So, this was put in place by the CFO of the town this year. Were we involved in that at all, or is that something that, that the town decided to do, and then we were informed after the fact, in terms of, when you went to request the money?
I was not involved in that discussion, nor do I believe was Darlene.
So, the latter.
Right, okay, so it's a new procedure that was just put in place by the town, and we're trying to meet their requests, is what we're trying to do.
Of course.
Okay, so is there any, hopefully, as board members, we can decide, or we can speak at least, or talk amongst ourselves about maybe, you know, trying to remedy this in the future, so that, it sounds like you've been spending a tremendous amount of time on this, I know, because we've been talking about this to Deanna's point for about six months now. And I know as board members, we'd certainly rather have you using your talents and skills in other areas. So, if there's anything I think that we can do as board members, that maybe you can give us some suggestions, and Brian, the same, in the future, so that we don't have to go through this again, or you don't have to go through this again, and we can spend our, our time better.
Well, I think that for the FY '16, we budgeted gross. So, if you remember, we increased the tuition by $600,000 over the current year's budgeted figure, with the anticipation that that's about how much we're actually going to spend. So, there's a significant difference in how the Board of Education's budget has been crafted from decades, based on the discussions throughout the budget, leading up to the creation of the Board of Education's proposed budget.
Right, and that was also an element, which is to, one of the reasons why our budget went up, in the extent that it did.
That is correct. It was, it increased by $600,000 to go from net to gross, and both techniques are acceptable, and both techniques are used. Normally, there's a consistency there, we're just kind of caught in a modification phase.
And that $600,000 accounts for .75 of the budget increase year-over-year. So, as we, what I didn't mention in our, in our budget discussion earlier, was the, the total budget increase year-over-year is to about 2.79%. So, without that $600,000 in that change from net to gross, we're at about a 2% year-over-year change in our, in our operating budget.
So, it makes a considerable difference as to what our increase has been.
Sure does.
I think it's important for the community to understand, too, because that wasn't, I don't think, made clear, I certainly didn't see that in the headline anywhere. So, I think it's important that people understand that.
Yes, Deanna?
And I just, because I can't help myself, I have to make it even more crystal clear, is that, that, that 600,000, that, that need for excess documentation that the state doesn't need, but our CFO needs, actually does translate into a tax event for the citizens of New Canaan. Whereas, if we had been allowed to continue to budget net, that would not have, it would have reduced our budget by 600, it would reduce the, you know, the amount that taxpayers would have to pay. It's, it is not an insignificant event for an accounting necessity by, by the town. So, I, I just, I want people to be very aware of how that, you know, impacts them.
It's also been additional time and hours spent by staff to have to document in new different ways that, on top of documentation, it's already gone in, so there is also a cost there, too, of taxpayer funds. We're still, we have a motion that we need to get on the floor.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Let's go with it. Is that what you were saying, Allison, you would, you want to move?
I will very reluctantly, extremely reluctantly-
We understand.
Make a motion to move to authorize the administration to transfer 73,000 from the unemployment line and 27,000 from the transportation line for the total transfer of $100,000 into the work project line, a project work line for the purpose of the SACS remediation project.
Is there a second on that, Jean? All right, all those in favor of this happening? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll move, yes, it is painful.
Thank you, the meeting tomorrow night is at 7:30.
7:30 at the Nature Center.
We have his next item, our consent agenda, to move for the list on the consent agenda. Can I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Deanna, in a second. Thank you, Penny, all in favor of that? Is everyone present? Announcements for future meetings? Dr.?
Sure, our next meeting is on a Tuesday night because of Memorial Day on Monday, so we'll be meeting on Tuesday, May 26th. Mr. Egan is busily preparing his athletics report, and that's what we have to begin with.
All right, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
I was going to ask about people, if there was anyone who wanted to speak, but I will not do that since no one is still here to speak. So, we will move, even though that's not on the agenda since we've done that. Motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with CGS 121B9, the subject to be discussed is negotiations. Is there a motion? Thank you, Penny.
So, moved.
Second? Thank you. All in favor? That's everyone here. Thank you.